Alright, folks, it is 4:30. I'd call to be the order. Copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted on the east wall of the Commissioners' Room. Roll call, please.
Meyer?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Knapper?
Here.
Reisig?
Here.
Blue?
Here.
Alright, so the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the free and public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Do you have any changes to the agenda?
I don't have anything.
Forward. If not, I would entertain a motion for approval.
I'd move approval of the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
No, second.
Any discussion?
You have five yeses?
Thank you.
Do you need Mark to go for you for a minute?
I'm good here. I just want to remind everybody, the Board does reserve the right to move to executive session anytime we feel that's necessary. Next item is the consent agenda. Anybody want anything removed from the consent agenda? There are none, I will entertain a motion for approval as submitted.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Any discussion? Record your votes.
You have five yeses?
Thank you. Do you have a motion to move into Board of Equalization?
I will move to move into Board of Equalization.
Second.
Any discussion? Call roll.
Go ahead and record your vote.
I mean, record your votes, I'm sorry. Alright. Just a quick note. Information that I'm receiving is Mr. Simpson is doing well, and hopefully he's gonna be on a full recovery here.
Yep.
We're doing a little checking on him, but he's doing okay. So, anyway. Gene Bauer?
Okay, so, the first one is the parcel ending in 3-0-1-9 for Declaration Church. And Mr. Henderson came in on... Mr. Henderson came in on March 19th and filed his permissive exemption application, which should have been filed by December 31st. He just missed the deadline. And so, we're recommending approval, but there will be a late fee of $300 that he'll have to pay.
Is that something that is accumulated, or is it just a one-time fee, Gene?
It's a one-time fee.
Okay.
He'll pay that instead of paying the property taxes.
Gotcha. Okay.
And that's state statute?
Um, I'm not sure if it's state statute or in the rules and regs.
I think part of the deal is it's a percentage of the tax, or $300, whichever is less, and it is in statute.
Yeah, it is in statute, so, thank you, Kelly. So, we are recommending approval of that. I'm sorry. Forgot to say.
I think you said that.
Okay.
So, I would move that we approve the exemption for Declaration Church as recommended.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion?
I have a question. Are we working on the one that ends in 1-9 to start?
Correct.
Thank you.
Record your votes, please.
I'm ready for you. I wasn't ready.
Okay, next item.
Okay, so this is also for Declaration Church. It is the parcel ending in 1-6-2-0. Same scenario. I did have a conversation with Mr. Henderson and asked him to calendar this somehow for, like, December 1st, or even November, so he doesn't forget. But he was understanding, and again, we're recommending approval of that.
Was there a penalty on this one as well?
There will be.
What was the penalty amount of this?
It'll be $300.
On the second one?
I'd move approval of the exemption application as recommended by Gene Bauer.
Okay, we have a motion for the approval. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion?
Alright.
Thank you. Next item, discuss, consider approval of property valuation for Scottsbluff School District.
Correct. And this is on parcel ending in 5-6-1-8. It's the old Aurora Building. So, just doing our due diligence, sent out a notice of intent to tax. They have to prove to us that they're going to use it for a public purpose. Even though we've all heard it in the news, they actually have to prove that to us. So, we sent a notice of intent to tax. They actually have people in the building now, and so, we're recommending approval of the protest, so that it will be exempt from taxes.
Is there any retro coming with any of that? Because they've owned that building for a while.
They haven't owned it that long.
Really?
They owned it as of January, as of January 1st.
Okay, I thought it was farther than that.
It was later in the year, yeah.
No problem.
So, it would be for the 2024 year, and, you know, some people, some businesses buy buildings and hold on to them for a variety of reasons. So, we just, we sent the notice of intent to tax, just to kind of cover all our bases.
Doing your job.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, it's their responsibility to prove otherwise.
It is, it is.
And request.
And so, we sent out the notices of intent to tax by March 1st. They had to appeal it as of April 1st, and then you'll make that decision by May 1st? Is that correct?
Something like that.
It's a timeline similar to that.
Okay, do I have a motion for approval? I just need one.
I'll move two.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Is there any discussion?
What was the tax loss again?
Substantial.
It is substantial. I don't have... I apologize, I don't have a...
That's what I called you for, I wanted to go.
Did you?
That's why I called you.
I can't, I don't...
We can pull it up real quick, can't we?
Can you pull it up on your computer?
If I know how to use my computer.
They're the ones that do internet.
We need to add that to these in the future.
Okay.
At least have some kind of idea. That's why I called you earlier, I see the number, we're losing it.
I was running in about five different directions. Short staffed in two offices today, and a whole lot of work to do.
I'm not gonna... I thought, when I get there, she'll have it for me, so I don't have to worry about it.
Well, I did not, so I'm sorry.
I'll have it just a second.
I want to say...
What's the tax loss? For 2023, it's about $198,000.
That's a big one.
Of course, the majority went to them.
Your house could pick that up, alright, alright.
That's true. Seventy percent of that went to them, so...
Mark, your house could pick that right.
Yeah.
Okay. So, it's the Board's pleasure. We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any other discussion? Record your votes.
We have four yeses and one no.
Okay.
Okay, and...
Next one is discuss, consider approval of property valuation protest, State of Nebraska DOT, parcel number 010001212.
Yep. This parcel had been previously taxed as it was currently being leased by the Department of Transportation, and they canceled the lease, and they are retaining the parcel and using... There's still, I think, one of these two has still some city of Scottsbluff stuff on it. One of the... I think they're side by side, and one of them was with the caboose, the tourism caboose. And...
Oh, they're not real big parcels.
They're not big parcels. So...
Did the city move that caboose off? Were they...
Yes, they did. I don't know where they moved it, but they did move it. But there's still a sign on there and something else, I think.
They took bids and they sold it?
Yes, yes.
Alright, what's the Board's pleasure?
We're recommending approval of it to be exempt.
You don't know the tax loss, I'm not sure.
No, I don't.
Tax loss on the second parcel is like treated as a... The parcel's not... It's not being taxed.
Oh, it's not.
I'd move approval of the property valuation protest as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Record your votes. Alright, next item is State of Nebraska, parcel number 010001220.
Same thing.
Same thing.
Mm-hmm. Recommending approval.
Is there a motion for approval or denial?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A motion for approval, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
That was the one with no tax loss?
It's being... She said it's being taxed now, it shouldn't be. Or, well, it is being taxed.
He said $306,000. What was on that? Zero.
I'm not quite sure why.
Okay, any other questions? Record your vote.
Why would we have to take that other one off if it wasn't being taxed already? Just ask.
It should have been...
Must have been exempted already.
It shouldn't have been.
Well, they haven't been paying taxes.
I can't answer that question, that was before me.
Okay, thank you, Gene.
Yes, thank you.
Next item is to receive the taxless corrections. Everybody's had that, heard of them? Anybody have any questions or concerns?
No. We had a double bill on one, is that what we had? We had a double billing on one.
I would talk to Heather.
Heather, wasn't that a double bill?
This was from Robert's office.
One of those taxless corrections was double charted.
Okay, it's showing that it was being double assessed in two different tax districts.
Double assessed.
Yes, it is.
So, it probably have reported it in more than one tax district.
Alright, do I have a motion for approval?
I move that we approve the taxless corrections.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Record your vote, please. Okay, motion to come out of Board of Equalization.
I'll move... Go ahead.
I'll make motion to come in and report to Board of Equalization.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Record your votes. Before we move on to Roden Bridge, and I wanted to do this before we started, I'm sure all of you are aware of the situation we had last weekend. Tim Newman put together the EOC at the city, several people responded. I'm not going to list any names, because I know I will forget somebody. But I'm speaking specifically of our county operation. Those that were there, I appreciate everything that was done. Those that weren't there, but were out doing something else to make sure that operations were up and running, whether it be alignment, or communications, or whatever the case might be. A lot of people working very hard to get a pretty tough situation put back together. And when that whole thing first started, we were talking days before anybody was going to have power. We had power in the City of Gearing, at least on the Main Street, 10th, by that afternoon. City Hall was up, the county was up, I think several businesses, there were those areas where if there wasn't a power pole to hook a wire to, you weren't going to get any power. And I think eventually, everybody did get power, and I don't know when that date was. Tim kind of kept me up for a day or two. But I know there were some areas where they were just couldn't get their... Had a phone call from FedEx, they were concerned about deliveries on Monday. I'd asked them not to go out there. If there's a barricade, don't go around it, whatever need to be delivered, could probably wait till the next day or whenever. But again, I'm not going to name names or departments, but everybody knows who you are, how you were involved, how hard everybody worked, and we spent a good chunk of the day on Sunday, making sure everything was up and put together. And I... For, and I'm speaking for the Board, for the Board, for the county, we appreciate all the hard work that everybody did. And it just goes to show you that coming together, putting your minds together, getting something done, we got it done. And I can't tell you how appreciative I am of everybody, so thank you. Okay, move on to Roden Bridge.
Good afternoon. With me is Tim Farmer, he is with Speech-Fluent Engineers out of Lincoln. They were doing the design on their river bridge here. So, if you have any questions as far as the design, he's going to be the guy to ask. A few months ago, we did the bid on the river bridges, we dueled them up, tried to do both at the one time. In the bid, the bid was excessive for what we could ever pay, it was over $5 million, if you recall, and we only had one bid at that time. They went back to the drawing board and redid the design and just split that West Bridge out. So, this bid is just for the West Bridge, since it's the worst bridge. We advertised it for the three weeks. We received, opened, got bids today at 11, opened about one, received three bids, which I set on your table there for you tonight. One from Paul Reed, Simon, and Kia Constructors. The lowest bid was Kia Constructors at the 2.16, 1 million for the bridge.
Where are they out of, Steve?
They're out of Milford, Nebraska. They're kind of a sister contractor of Parrot Construction, if you know Parrot, out of Valentine.
Yes. You're talking about Parrot?
Or Parrot, is that what it is? Yeah, yeah, out of Valentine, they're kind of a sister company to them. They have extensive background in bridge deck rehabilitation, so... Our first concern after seeing the bid, the engineer's estimate I also gave you, it was a little over 2 million, 2,96,000. We had originally funded 1.67 million out of ARPA for this. We had an ARPA meeting last week, we still have an extra 277,000 that we can allocate to this. We held off allocating that anywhere else till we seen where the bids come in. So, that gets up to about 1.9 or a little more in ARPA funds that we can use for this. We went and talked to Lisa, and she thought that she could come up with the other funds to go ahead and get this going.
Bridge match won't apply to none of this?
No, no, no bridge match in this, so...
What's your reason for that?
Hasn't opened back up. Hasn't opened back up for any drawings yet to submit any bridges, so... They probably won't do that again until, I bet, November, I think, October is when that opens up again, for the new selection criteria, so... So, we would recommend accepting the bid from the Kia Constructors for the 2.161 million. It's only going to get more expensive, and it needs done, so...
Okay, Russ?
Well, I was going to say, you know, we didn't get this, you just had that bid today.
Yes, yep, they had to have them in at 11 today, and we just did it at, opened them at 1.
There's not even a date on this thing. I was looking over it, I thought, when did you guys do this?
It's a letting date.
All you have is a time, there's no date.
Letting date 11 a.m., third line down, on the bid tab.
Where's that?
In the bright yellow.
You're saying a date.
At the top.
The date for...
Today's date.
Oh, for today's date? Oh. Oh, okay, yeah.
Time I see.
Okay.
But you had the...
I was trying to figure out. I called you a later day to see what the date was on this, because I didn't know.
Today's date.
I didn't have the bid. These packets weren't in file, I thought.
No, because we didn't bid it till today.
Well, it didn't say that by package. Well, I wanted to see the bid. I wanted to go over this.
So, the next closest bid was still $400,000 higher, and that was by Paul Reed, and then another couple hundred thousand higher for Simon, so... At least we did get three bids. That's better than the one we got last time.
How long is this bid good for, Steve?
30 days.
30 days?
Yep. They believe they can start construction in December of this year, and they want 200 and, like, 220 working days or construction days.
210 construction days.
210 construction days to complete it, so by August of '25, it should be done. I'm assuming over the winter, they would do the deconstruction of it, tear the deck all off, and then come springtime would be the time for, start pouring the concrete. That's actually sooner than what I thought. I didn't think they'd even start on it till probably 2025.
Do you feel we can come up with the money, or do you want to work with this a little bit? You want to table this till the next meeting? I have no problem approving. I have a problem, I don't know where the money's coming from. I want to see where the money's at.
Well, we already, we designated, like, what?
1.7.
7 million, yeah, 1.7 in ARPA.
Was it 1.7? I was like 1.1 or 1.2.
It was like 1.67, or something like that.
Oh, 1,650,000, and we still had 277,000 to allocate. So, we do have some money sitting that we could allocate our remaining ARPA.
But that won't push us over 1.1, or 2.1.
Well, it'll get us up to 2.
Gets up to 2. And then we're going to technically be paying for the majority of this in the next fiscal, well, all of it in the next fiscal year.
Come out on that.
Next year.
Why you want to make sure that we've got it covered, so on?
That's a good question. I said, "That's a good question."
Is there engineering on top of this? Engineering above and beyond this?
Yes.
Bid? What's your engineering cost?
Oh, I don't have that with me, I guess, I don't know what the total engineering costs is.
Because that's a whole nother animal we need to consider, because if we're maxed out on this, and that's 300 grand, we got to figure out where it's coming from.
Most of the engineering has already been paid for this already.
Okay.
So, I think the only engineering left would be the oversight of the project oversight.
Do you have an idea what the number is on that? A rough idea what the number is on that? Get me in a ballpark, 100,000 each way.
5%, so 120?
So, we're looking at another 120 on top of a 2.1. So, we're going to be like 2.2, 2.5, 2.3?
Close to 2.3.
So, we're going to be close to 2.3. So, that's why I think, you guys have a problem with table, so we make sure Lisa can put this together, because there's, I want to be sure we have the money to do it. I have no problem doing the job, I just want to be sure we have the money. What, how do you guys feel about it?
You and I visited briefly, had, if you're not comfortable with doing what we need to do, and I understand that, Russ.
Well, if I'm not comfortable, I'll be sure we can pay.
Well, just getting it up today, for the first time, to look at it.
Look, I've only looked at it now for like eight minutes, it's pretty hard to spend two and a half ninety dollars, and I've only looked at it.
What would hold you back? I mean, the work needs to be done, this is allocated, the majority of it, ARPA. What's our other means to getting this project done? If you wait two weeks?
Well, the bids are good for 30 days, we got to, if we hold it for two weeks, and make sure that you can put the money together.
Where we, I mean, does it need to get done?
What's that?
Does this project need to get done? Do the community, does the community need to get it done?
I don't know how bad it is.
You'd... I thought you were under that bridge before, I'm sorry, Russ.
I've been under those bridges, I've been under those bridges, I don't know. Doesn't seem to be falling in yet.
Well, we hope they don't get to that point. At that point, that 2 million is like seven.
Replace the costs between 6 and 7.
So, would you like to see it tabled? If that, I would entertain a motion.
Well, I'm just, I...
If that's what you want to do.
If Lisa thinks we can pull it up, we're like, we're at 1.2 or 2.3 million.
You might not get another one of your projects, you might have to table something back. This might have to be pushed forward, rather than maybe something else said.
Well, it's definitely needs to be done, but I just want to be sure that you're comfortable finding the money for it. I'm trying to do this for you.
I'm sorry, I'm surprised you said that. I think we're fine.
Okay.
I say, if you're fine, it's a...
You're going to find it, and you're going to make a hole, I guess. I'm reading, just hesitating.
I'm saying.
So, what do you want to do? You want to table it, or do you want to vote on it tonight?
I don't think I really, you know, want to argue with it. If she has the money, there's no need to sit here and split hairs, we just move on.
If she feels, if you're comfortable with the fact that the money's there to do it, I think that was the concern.
Well, that was my concern, because it hadn't been looked at. Like I said, I don't...
Yeah, I've, even looking at it, I still don't know what I'm looking at, I don't know...
Well, I know, even looking at this doesn't tell us what the total bridge costs are, because the total costs never come in, it seems like everything gets split up into two sections.
Well, you got some engineering, you got some engineering that wasn't included with that.
And that doesn't surface when we look at the costs here.
And I understand that.
So, we need to know where they're at, and that's what we're not seeing. We're seeing costs, we don't even know for sure if that's what's up.
If you'd be more comfortable tabling it for two weeks, I could get you a firmer number on engineering costs.
That's what I'd like to see. I'd like to see what the engineering costs are, what the bridge costs are, and, you know, I mean, when we get this an hour before the meeting, it doesn't give me enough time to make...
Why don't you make your motion, Russ?
I'll make a motion to table, and I don't see a problem with it, if Lisa can put the numbers together. If you can give us the real numbers, we should be fine.
We have a motion to table this till the next meeting, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Record your votes, please. Okay, two weeks, we'll get it back on the agenda.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you so much. Under general, agenda items discussed, consider approval of the mail, I almost said fiance.
Finance.
The mail fiance lease. Finance lease, sorry, Lisa.
So, every five years, we redo our mail finance lease, which is for the postage machines that are in our building and the courthouse building next door. We were able to renegotiate our price for the next five years, and it's actually $225 a quarter less than it was in previous years.
Oh, I think we should pay the higher price.
Yeah, I mean, we're actually, we're actually going to save about $900 a year with the new postage lease. And both machines will be updated, and they do also, there are new postal regulations with metered mail later on this year, and the new machines will take care of those also.
These machines have to be leased, if I remember right. You can't purchase them.
I think you could, but I think it's better in the long run if we lease them, just because of repairs and things like that.
Updating and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, the updating part of it. I was thinking Pitney Bowes required you to lease it, but Mike's probably the expert on this subject.
Yeah, you had to lease them.
Yeah, and we've had, we've had our postage lease with Quadi, and our contacts are actually Midwest Connect out of Carney, and anytime they come, they actually have a local person who can come service our machines, if he's available and in town. They actually have quite a big region of machines, um, between Western Nebraska, Montana, South Dakota, and Wyoming.
Okay, what do you guys, what's the board's pleasure?
I move that we approve the, uh, mail finance lease.
Sir, second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
What's the, well, just to kinda give some, uh, experience here, when, at Region One, Behavioral Health, we financed one of these. And it was a break even proposition, maybe even lost a couple thousand dollars a year on it. I don't think they did nearly the volume that you guys do here, so it's, it's probably a, definitely a cost savings here.
It's a cost saving, I was gonna look and see, I don't know what regular postal mail is these days, I don't know what it's gone up to. We're at like, sixty-eight cents.
Think you save about five cents on a regular first class postage.
Yeah.
Now, anyway.
Now, and I don't, and ballots, I'm not sure, cause ballots are what we're mailing quite a bit of right now. So, they, they definitely get their use between our building and the other building next door.
So, it's ballots vaulted.
So you have one, um, machine here, one there, and then it also splits up which department is.
Everybody has their own user code.
Right.
By department, so.
So they get the advantage of being able to use a higher quality machine, um, and then it splits out a statement each month or whatever, and.
Yeah.
So you know who used what.
Yeah, and every department then gets reimbursement on their postage, so, you know, the postage is being charged per department.
I would think with the quantity of postage that we have, at the very least, you probably save, just in postage, enough to break even, plus the issue of, uh, the other savings, I guess, or the other conveniences.
Yeah.
That it provides.
And we have, I would say we have most of the departments, um, in the county set up with their own code, there's a few departments, um, that still, like, buy forever envelopes and just use those. For everything, but, um, I, I think overall, it works well, it's in my office, and I mean, our postage machine in this building is busy all day long.
Okay, any other questions, concerns? Record your votes.
Just so you know, there are two contracts, one for each building. Okay?
Alright. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, receive programming update, Emily Stein, am I right?
Correct.
Awesome. Uh, Community Environment Extension Educator Horticulture Landscape and Environment Systems.
It's a whole ton of.
Wow.
Um, so these are, these are corner newsletters.
Thank you.
From the Extension Office, at Scotts Bluff. Um, and it just highlights some of the, some of the things we've had going on the first part of this year. Um, four H has been very active, they've had a STEM day with a hundred and thirty some odd students. Um, where they got to play with drones and different technologies to introduce them to STEM as a concept. Um, they invaded the Panhandle Center, and we're doing all sorts of events and different, um, workshops. Uh, they also have, um, the Lego, they have a Lego team within four H, um, and they also hosted an event. Talking about the Lego competition that the state has, um, for the four H participants. The, um, Childhood Development, Jackie Guzman, uh, did a training with a number of Head Start educators, I think there were about a hundred and thirty-four, thirty-five. Um, focusing on a, with a poverty simulation, um, to, where they encourage folks to, um, shift the, the mental paradigm of poverty being a, a, a personal failure and more toward a societal, uh, a need for societal support. Um, and then my department, or my, my group, um, we've seen some changes with the hardiness zone. Um, we, the USDA tweaked things at the beginning of the year, and all that really did was shift things about five degrees up. It's not a big deal for our area, um, but we did have the master gardener training, um, we did both virtual and online. Uh, Scotts Bluff area, I'm responsible for the entire Panhandle, um, and, and I had thirty participants this year. Um, two new master gardeners, who will be asked to do forty hours of education on top of forty hours of volunteer work. Uh, doing horticulture education within the community, um, and we're working on figuring out some, some different options. And then we discussed everything from pruning to, uh, pollinator gardens and vegetable gardens, and just different topics that the master gardeners requested, um, using, um, scientific data to back it up.
Can I, one question, point of clarification, and I'm reading here under the poverty simulation. It says poverty as a structural and a failure of society, can you explain that to me?
Um, so I'm not incredibly familiar with, with this, um, specifically, this isn't my area of knowledge, but my, my guess is that it's more, um, stagnating wages and the cost of living increasing at the same time. Um, and, like I said, I, this wasn't my project, that would be Jackie's, um, and all I know is the paragraph that we've, that I've been given. Um, but I imagine it's more of a, a widespread problem than just it be falling on one person, it's, it's a broader issue.
Okay.
I, I would, I would disagree with that statement, I would really wish the Extension Center would teach kids that poverty is the natural state. And we, we pull ourselves out of the natural state by achievement. And therefore, it is not a societal problem, it is a, um, definitely not a structural failure of society. This, we live in the greatest country in the world, where opportunity abounds, and we need to be teaching our youth, that's what we need to be teaching our youth.
This just kinda bounced down at me.
That's not me too.
I, uh, at the last meeting, I, I got a copy of this at the Extension Board, and that caught my eye too, uh. And honestly, it rings a socialist. And I'm a firm believer that some people will be in poverty because of physical reasons, or whatever, or, or maybe the, uh, uh, intelligence reasons, but the vast majority of people, uh, can pull themselves out of it. I mean, the opportunities are there, uh, it may, cause I grew up, I wasn't very well off, of course, nobody was my neck in the woods.
Who would've thought that?
And so, I never, I didn't do myself a beating in poverty. But I chose a career path in my life, and I made those decisions, I researched, I chose the military for twenty years, and I chose some other options. And I feel that sometimes, when we promote this idea of poverty is not your fault, I disagree. Sometimes it is, and I just, and in that last Extension meeting, I, I read through their, uh, early childhood education, seems like everybody's brother government's involved in early childhood education. And what I've seen happening with that is driving the cost of daycare up, where it's very unaffordable. And, so I don't know, I, I just question sometimes what direction the Extension Office is going.
I can't speak to childhood development at all, I'm, I'm responsible for Horticulture Landscape and Environmental Services. I can tell you how to grow your vegetables, but I can't speak to.
We've had a conversation before about this, in, in past meetings, about that, and, and like.
When Jackie was here.
Yeah, Jackie was here. And, and, you know, the, what I've taught my kids and my grandkids is your success is totally dependent on you. No matter what it is, money doesn't, money doesn't always mean success. To me, that's, that's a good rule to follow, and, and that's what I followed when I grew up. So, I just, I just have, you know, and I wish she was here to explain that, I really do.
But I am a big fan of the Extension Service in the traditional areas it's been, and I've been very active in that over the years. I just see it kinda reaching out in an area that other people have reached out in, other government agencies, and see a lot of duplication. And from what I've seen, experienced, is, it's not working, it's not working.
So, my thoughts, in fact, uh, we asked Jackie some questions concerning some of the social, I'll call them liberal, um.
CRT items.
Yeah, and are we doing any of that, and we said that we, at that time, those CRT things, that we weren't. But I just want us to be careful, because two things grabbed my attention here, the other one's yours, and that's the climate change story. And how much of that, that is, um, pushed? Um, because as you know, there's strong feelings on both sides of that issue. And, um, I wanna be absolutely sure that if we're presenting that, we're presenting both sides of the issue, and not just one.
So the USDA Hardiness Map, which is what I'm referring to here, specifically refers to how cold we get in winter on average. That's it, it's only a metric that we use to kind of figure out where plants are likely to survive. Um, and I, and I understand your concern about using the words climate change.
Sure.
Um, it is a very polarizing topic, however, there is data to suggest that actions that we have taken have pressed the fast forward button on climate change as a whole. And climate change isn't li- isn't limited to global warming or global cooling, it's an entire system. And so we're seeing more dramatic weather patterns because of the destabilization of the jet stream up near the Arctic, and all of those things.
What, what, what age of kids are we talking about here?
Four.
In, in any of that.
Um, so four H is.
I think they're eight, eight.
Eight, I think, I think eight, eight to high school.
So, so we're talking about eight-year-olds about why it's cold, or why it's not cold, or whatever the thing.
When approaching something like climate change to an eight-year-old, I'm not going to use the same language I might talking to all of you. Um, we're gonna talk about things like weather patterns, like, why is it raining so much more, you know? When we're talking about climate to children, we tend to scale things differently, um, and we focus more on weather when they're younger, because that's tangible and understandable, but as, as they increase pattern recognition, we're able to expand that out, um, and talk about long term. You know, things like the Dust Bowl, we bring those into discussions about how our actions and, and farming changed the environment, leading to the Dust Bowl and the after effects of that. So, this, this article that, 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 um, I included about the, the hardiness zones is geared toward adults. This isn't something I would take to kids, I would scale it appropriately to say, we have patterns, this is what's going on, in a way that they can understand and apply it. And it's not meant, it's not meant to fear monger, it's not meant to polarize, it's merely to say, here is some science, in a way you can approach it. And I don't have, you know, my, my tools or my figures or anything to help explain what that might look like, um, but it's, it's, I'm not going to use the technical terms that I did in this article, talking to an eight-year-old, does that make sense?
So are you talking about theories, or are you talking about actual events?
Actual science, um, I.
There's a big difference.
It, it's, it's both, because we're talking about it conceptually, we're talking about climate change and, and the changes that we are experiencing in our, in our environment are, there's data to back these statements up. We are seeing a decrease in polar ice caps, which is a destabilization in the jet stream, which increases the weather patterns, uh, the more, the more dramatic weather patterns that we have, there's science to back that up. But I'm not going to treat an eight-year-old, I'm not expecting an eight-year-old to understand what a jet stream is. Whereas, as adults, there's kind of an inherent knowledge that we at least know on some level what a jet stream is, the, you know, global air movement. But I'm going to scale it down to them with examples from our local area. Do you remember that really big hailstorm we had last May? Do you remember that really big rainstorm we had a couple years ago in nineteen? Touch, touchstones that they can relate to, that I, that kind of get them thinking about the grand scale of things.
I just want you to be sure or careful, okay, because you're, you're pushing the limit here as to where.
Limit, I, I feel that, uh, climate change should be dealt with, just like religion and politics, it should be dealt with on a personal level. I don't think taxpayers should be pushing climate change. We don't know, we don't know which way it's going, I mean, we don't have a handle.
You could read as much information one way as you can the other.
Exactly, there's, there's.
It's, it's the way that you wanna believe.
And I, I think if you're teaching eight-year-olds, don't matter what side you're teaching them, that's what they're gonna perceive.
I, I don't do any, where, I don't have anything on the docket, climate change specific, I'm using this as an example. Um, I don't have any child programming at this point, so.
I wanna say the big picture, that we gotta be careful of that, and so we have two items here that, in my opinion, pushes somewhat of a socialist agenda, and I wanna be careful with that.
I agree.
I'm very, very careful, and we're part of this, and if we are, um, that's why some of those questions got la- asked the last time Jackie was here. I will tell you one other thing, though. Um, the twenty-seventh, wasn't it of last month when we had the meeting in Bridgeport, I believe? And there was a, a fellow there with the University of Nebraska. And he, he was talking, and we had things about, um, uh, we had a lady from the Department of Agriculture there talking about feedlots and cattle and all kinds of stuff. But anyway, my point to it was, it, I, that day, I almost said something and didn't, but I realized how important that, um, four H, and the things that four H taught when I was there, was extremely important. And, um, how it then led from four H to FFA to other areas in life. And, um, it was a really good thing, it was a really good thing to learn about, um, uh, how to deal with things, I was fortunate enough, I grew up at least in a rules setting. And so all that stuff meant a lot to me, and then recently, I did ask Jackie about, what about the people that are, you know, forty miles north, out in the middle of nowhere, and the kids that are in those areas? And I also like the thought of them hearing about the STEM agenda. Because they need to hear the other side, they hear the four H, um, ag side of things. And they grow up being people that are, they're expected to work, and they're expected to be part of chores and other things done at home, but sometimes I'm concerned they're missing out on the STEM side of things. And as much as kids in town need to hear parts of the four H and the ag side of things, the kids out there also need to hear about the STEM side of things, and if we're pushing those things, I, I like that.
I will say the.
I hesitate on the other two.
The four H Lego team, I think last year went to state, um, with how well they did. Um, and I know Nathan has been doing a lot with that STEM and that, that engineering side of things.
I know there's lots of good things that you've done, and can do, and will do. Just wanna be a little careful in liberal agendas.
In what, what direction we're moving.
I would just add in here that the Lego mini play preps teams and robots, there's one team called the Cookie Bites. And they got second place a state, and they are going to an international competition in Detroit, Utah, in June.
Right.
And one of the members of that team is Bo Canap. He did the coding for the robot, and, um, pretty impressive program, so. You know, we're, we're, we're gonna be hard on some things, and we're also very happy for some of the things you guys do. I do get to talk to the governor once a month on a call with the NACO board, and, uh, the last time Jackie was here, we talked about social emotional learning. I let Ricketts know about it, he dug in. Um, I will talk to Governor Pillen about some of the things in here, um, and we know you're just a messenger today. But, these are things that our constituents talk to us about, and so that's why we bring them here, so.
And, and don't get us wrong, you guys do a great job on a ton of stuff, you really, really do.
And if you wanna be putting pre-emergent down on your lawn, now is the time.
Uh, one, one closing question.
Sure.
And this covers all education areas, this, are we teaching kids what to think, or how to think?
My goal is to teach them how to think.
I agree, that's our goal.
So, one, one example is, um, I've done a, a photosynthesis, um, project with kids, and it, and it's making them answer questions about the world around them, how does this work? And that's really how I do a lot of my teaching, is very question oriented. Don't regurgitate me the information, but give me your interpretation of it, so.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Very good, thank you so much, keep up the good work. Okay, next item, discuss, consider Mental Health Month proclamation, uh, this came out of our Region One meeting. Uh, I had them send a copy of the proclamation to Kelly, uh, and the other eleven Panhandle boards. So, it's basically, if you want me to read it, I will. You have a copy of it?
Well, yeah, they don't have.
Whereas there's proven connection between good mental health and overall personal health, and whereas mental health illness affect almost every family in America. And whereas people with mental illness recover. And whereas people with mental illness recover if given the necessary services and supports in their communities. And whereas people with mental illness make important contribution to our families and our communities. And whereas millions of adults and children are hindered by mental illness every year. And whereas only one of two people with a serious form of mental illness seeks treatment for his or her mental illness. And whereas stigma and fear of discrimination keep many who would benefit from mental health services from seeking such help. And whereas research shows the most effective way to reduce stigma is through personal contact with someone with a mental illness. And whereas good mental health is critical to the well being of our families, communities, schools, and businesses. And whereas greater public awareness about mental illness can change negative attitudes and behaviors toward people with mental illness. Now therefore, I Ken Meyer, on behalf of Scotts Brook County Board, do hereby proclaim the month of May twenty twenty four as Mental Health Month. As the Scotts Brook County Board Chair, I also call upon all citizens, government agencies. Public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental illness. Reducing stigma and discrimination and promoting appropriate accessible services for all people with mental illness. So if you agree with that, I would entertain a motion to declare month of May, mental health. Awareness in Scotts Brook County.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Call the roll. Kelly, I think you've got a copy for me to sign, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. All right, moving on under old business, clerk of the district court window remodel. Any updates on that?
I saw uh Jay said he couldn't be here. He called me this afternoon and told me that uh he's got one guy coming on Wednesday and I asked him to get hold of Timmy Bloomingcane. Is your company interested in bidding on any of that work? Okay, uh, I said, we don't want just one bidder. I said, we need at least a couple. Cause we, I was talking to him about the fueling deal and then this came up and he said, I won't be there, so. Anyway, uh, Wednesday or Thursday, they'll be, go walk through and get the push together. So that's in the process. It's moving. Okay, very good. Uh, next item's time clock plus and payroll processes. Who's gonna speak to that, Lisa? Andy?
Nothing.
I have others.
We have nothing on that. Okay, we'll open it up to public comments at this time. Board of Commissioners will receive public comments on items discussed at this meeting or suggestions for items of discussion at a future board meeting. The board will not take any action on comments presented this date. Is anybody from the public that wishes to speak to the board? Hearing none, we'll move on to board and staff reports. We'll start with the board, Russ.
Well, I, now, not all I know about is the bridge work. I'm gonna leave that for Steve. He can explain where we're at on a couple of those when it gets to him. I think we can leave it to him because he wrote a lot more than I did.
Okay. Anything else that you wanna discuss?
I think everything else is really right.
Mike, anything?
Uh, they canceled our housing authority meeting again. This is like the second or third month they've done that.
Something not right there.
Well, they're having a problem with getting a quorum. Uh, one of the board members is going to assisted living. They haven't gotten another board member appointed yet. Uh, and I got about three meetings lined up this week, so.
All right, um, I had meetings all day Thursday uh from aging office, which will be moving. Not today, but a week from today, over to their new location on downtown Gary. They purchased a building, uh, which opens up all those offices. If there are other agencies that may be looking, and I brought it up to Region One about that. They were gonna check into it. They were also looking at another location, possibly the school. Uh, they've got a lot of room up there. It's a ton of room, but I'm not sure what they're gonna do with all of it. But uh. Then the other one was, uh, some legislation coming down. Governor Pillen has decided. For those that don't know what I'm talking about, there's what they call a waiting list and has been. Years ago, when I sat on that board, there was a waiting list of people that needed services. And if somebody got out, then somebody next on the list were able to be serviced or taken care of. And one of the things Governor Pillen is 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 promoting is to do away with a waiting list. Which would mean that there are fifteen hundred and some folks out there that need to be handled, taken care of somehow. I'm not exactly sure that's gonna work. I know the frustration level of the meeting was rather high with the staff. Basically saying that we have a lot of folks that need services, they need help. We don't have the facilities to do it. They're not giving them the the money to do it. So they're in kind of a quandary over there. But they they persevere, they do a good job in all the different areas and it's a, it's a, a good operation, so. Other than the, I will, I will point out one name. I said I wasn't going to do that, and that'd be Kenny B. At the uh E O C Operating Center. Kenny B showed up, Bill Boyer actually showed up and was uh so helpful with a lot of different things, whether. Whether it was writing the 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 news releases or whatever needed to happen. And we really appreciate that. It was an extra set of eyes and ears that you don't, you're not always, always sure of, but uh.
He was happy to be here.
He didn't look happy. He wasn't, he didn't act happy, but uh, no, they they.
I wanna, I wanna say something now.
Go ahead.
He was in there not as a member of the press, you know, because he was a vice member of the press. He was, because the other press wasn't, no other press did he was invited. Ken, because he, he's a member of the uh law enforcement committee that they've set up. Uh, yeah, I can't remember what it's called, but that's why he was there. So he did, I wanna, I wanna make it, make it clear he didn't have inside information, he didn't get any information before any of the other press entities did.
Right.
Uh, he's, he's on some, uh, a committee that was set up and.
Well, you admit, you had mentioned it that day, but I don't remember what it was.
Well, so there was a committee that was set up and if, cause I asked a question. Because that's, that's not something that we normally invite the press to, it's not something that we give information to. So the other president, he asked me about that. And I was very clear and said, he wasn't, he wasn't invited to the press, but there's a, the law enforcement, there was, there was some sort of uh. Thing that Tim Newman set up that was an emergency coordinating committee. And we invited multiple members of the media to to enter into that. Kenny B agreed to. So that's, that's how that happened.
Okay, yeah, but again, just, just when I said he was very appreciative that he was there and he was a big help. Okay, uh, Mark, what do you?
Um, my primary meetings are this week, um, Heartland Expressway and um. The uh. We do not have a meeting this month with Penhale Public Health. And those are my primary meetings that I have.
It was interesting, at the Bridgeport meeting, I'd asked, uh, what's her name?
Annie.
Annie, who their PR person is for this project from Minoterra and she couldn't give me a name. And I, I don't know whether anybody else is getting calls. I received numerous calls from folks that just aren't happy with the information that they're either getting or not getting about what's going on. What's happening?
I didn't hear what issue.
On the, on the, on the uh Heartland, Heartland Express out of Minoterra.
Okay, have you, do you have any information on which side of the road they're taking on that?
Yeah, um, you know, she reported to us that day down there that they still haven't made the decision.
I kinda heard the north side is where I heard.
You know, I've heard several things, but my understanding, the official position is they have not decided yet.
Official position is they have no official, official position.
Well, the, the, and the problem is, the concerns that I'm getting are are landowners saying, I don't know what to do. I have a pivot here. I have a house that's gonna be affected. Am I gonna have to move? Nobody's able to answer any questions at this point.
I've dealt with that state.
Well, there, there was.
They pay you almost partially once a week.
There, there, there was one in particular, the, that, when they were down doing their survey and whoever found out that the individual's fence. Was like a foot and a half into the state right away, in thirty days to move the fence. And they said, well, we're born happy to do that if you can tell us whether the highway's going here or it's gonna go here. No, and and they were, they were not very easy to work with and they spent, I don't know, twenty five hundred bucks to move the, to move the fence.
Well, I was sure they were a lot like the Gestapo.
It wasn't going to hurt any, it wasn't hurting anything. They would've had to move it eventually, if in fact that's where the, the. And there are others that are the same way, that aren't getting the questions answered. And uh, it's just frustrating for the folks. It really is. So hopefully she, she took that back to the group and will, the DOT, get somebody out there.
But you hadn't learned anything as far as what routes are taken or for sure whether they're.
Well, yeah, they, they certainly don't know which side they're gonna be on. And obviously, they're, they're, they're keeping. Two lanes and then they're adding two lanes, but which side, we don't know.
I heard they were going to the north. They weren't gonna cross back and forth.
Nope, nobody knows for sure. Nobody has a definite answer on that.
No, that's true. That's, that's the story I got.
Right.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
But it has been moved up a little bit because of that extra funding.
Yeah, I heard they had some more funding, so that did.
Right. That, yeah, and I say moved up, it just simply, what they said was, it gave them the opportunity to move things up a little bit. Exactly the schedule is the DOT.
Who knows? Yeah, who knows? Okay, Charlie?
Um, tourism meeting Wednesday at one fifteen at the Legacy of the Plains. I met with a couple folks from the um. Tourism committee to discuss some other ideas to move, to kind of refresh um the group. And the uh energy there. So we're, we have an agenda item to move the time and date. Or the, the day and time to evenings and possibly rotate the location of the. Meetings and then we can go from there. Um. T C D had a meeting last week. If you guys, I'd like to, I'd like you guys to call me individually and and discuss some of those things. Um, I'd also encourage you to go to their website, um, and just peruse it a little bit. Um. The uh. That's all I'm gonna say.
Okay.
Um, there was uh legislation passed last week on. Renewable energies, conditional use permits and uh taxing. Um, we were just made aware of it last night, but it, it looks like um. Any new applications will not um be able to uh. Operate under conditional use permits and that renewable energy facilities will have to pay personal property tax and. Real property tax and um. That's different from the current setup now.
What, that was just passed on Thursday?
Just passed like last Thursday. It passed like a hundred bills last Thursday.
Was, was, was this an emergency or is this gonna have to be wait for?
I, I don't have the information on that, so. Um. Yeah, so there's one more day legislature. I think, is that tomorrow?
I thought it was Tuesday. I think they're, I think, aren't they done now?
They got one more day.
They got one day left, okay.
And this to take care of any governor vetoes that may happen between now.
Okay.
If the governor doesn't intend to veto anything, it's according to um, his office's say, so.
All right, very good. Thank you. Uh, let's start with staff, Lisa.
Uh, there's a NERMA conference Wednesday uh at the Civic Center. Anyone's interested, talking a lot about different topics this year, just different presenters than normal. A lot of legal topics and First Amendment right talk, but topics. Should be pretty good.
What time is this going to be?
Um, eight, yeah.
Yeah, one thirtieth here, four o'clock, I don't know what it is now. I'll try to be back there.
About this week.
Okay, anything else, something?
Nope, I don't have anything else.
Sheriff, you have anything?
Uh, no.
Okay. Kurt?
Bert, uh, next week's Public Transit Week, if you're not aware. I did post on our Facebook page, the list of activities we're doing throughout the week. And we had uh really good support from a lot of local businesses, organizations donated some things uh for us to do drawings for our, our passengers. Uh, so hopefully we'll really push up our, our ridership numbers next week with that. And you're more than welcome to stop by any time and take a look at all the great swag giveaways we have. Um, with regard to the, the power outage last week, I did um work with Kimball County. Went down, actually got their generator, uh, not knowing if we were gonna be without power. And uh, I guess with that, what I would like to consider maybe at budget time is if we can get this generator switch out done here. This summer, potentially like a next budget cycle. Uh, Jay had talked about moving the, the old generator from here out to the roads building. And I think if, if we could work that into the budget, since the, the majority of the cost is the generator, see if we can get that up and online for the next year.
Can we split that with your building? Can we loop that in here?
I'm sorry, is that?
Can we loop some of that into your building, some of the power?
I, yeah, well, we, we would, we would need uh at least some, some basic power into the, to the bus barn for some basic lights and to be oper- uh, operate those doors. Those overheads, if you have to open them manually, take forever with chain fall on there, uh, to be able to get those doors open. Also to get the fueling station, we'll, we'll need power. Uh, so I think that would be something that we need to look at, making sure we get power to that in, in the event, you know, the sheriff's vehicles or, or transit vehicles need pa- need fuel.
Did you ever get the generator from?
I, I picked it up. I had it here, um, and then we got power back Sunday.
You got power back on then, okay.
So, uh, I was gonna work, I had talked to Jay and we were gonna, if the power wasn't gonna out, we were gonna, he was trying to get old Robinson Electric to come out and connect it. Should we need it, if it had all the cords and cables we needed, it was just a matter of tying it in. Um, thankfully, didn't need it. We are still working on an M O U with Kimball County for some other, um. Some other agreements for, for sharing services and assisting. Like I said, if we were to have a tornado here and, or some disaster and my staff needed to take care of their family. Work with Kimball County to come up here and help in transportation, should we need it, and vice versa. And that's still something we've been working on. Going into, as we talk about budgets, we said the generator thing, if we could potentially look at getting that part uh funded as well. We had passed resolutions for our, our new replacement vehicles um back in twenty, uh. March of twenty three and May of twenty three for a minivan transit and four cutaway buses. Um, we, ten percent of that, while the, the prices of those have jumped significantly as with everything. So as we look at budget, uh, budgets coming up here, we've done pretty well on ours. We haven't expended any money out of our vehicles account. And might have you at least consider allowing it, me to take some of that money. Still there, in the fiscal year, push it over into our capital expenditures fund, so I don't have to come back and rebudget and ask for more. Uh, to give you an example, the, the four, the minivan when approved, sixty five thousand dollars. So our cost would be sixty five hundred. The new ones are seventy six thousand, five hundred and thirty nine. So, uh, that raises the county's uh difference by eleven hundred dollars. Uh, the buses, when, when we approved, were ninety two thousand. They are a hundred and twenty four thousand and ninety six, uh, nine, a hundred and twenty four thousand, ninety six dollars. So that's an additional thirty two, almost thirty three hundred dollars per bus. Um, so if I, we had that money budgeted, if we don't use it in order not have to try and rebudget that again, I would like to at least see if we can consider moving that over there. To cover those, they are all supposed to be on order now. The lead time is just, it is what it is at this point.
And what do you do with the other buses? I, I think you've told us that once before and I don't recall.
Right now, I have one that burns a lot of oil that we, we use sparingly. I will probably get rid of it, but because of these extended lead times. And talking with N D O T, they're recommending keeping additional backups, uh, but otherwise, we put them on that, that big iron auction. Um, we, but we ideally keep them as backups until we know we can resolve this.
If you will check with the Office of. It's over by City Hall. They sit on that board and they're, they're having problems getting vehicles. They have one vehicle, the engine's gone. So we approved to have the engine replaced because they couldn't get other vehicles.
Right.
And, and they, they have lifts and, you know, some of ours may work just fine for over there for at least a temporary thing until their other stuff.
Right, right. And that's, I've had churches reach out to me, um, and about what we do with ours and. I, I keep a list of names of, you know, and when they go up for the auction, I try and contact them and let them know when they'll be available.
You might, you might contact that office and let them know that there may be something available, cause they're, they're just pulling their hair out trying to get vehicles. They just can't handle.
And uh, and I, I keep my eye open for any, any uh additional vehicles out there, but again, this is, and the state is trying to partner with. Surrounding states to see if they can make uh work off their contracts to give us some different options. Uh, the, the Buy America thing is. Uh, the Buy America thing is really making it difficult in, in many instances, but, um, like I said, as we work on that in budget time, I, I'd something I'd like to, to have you all consider, just so we're not having to re, rebudget for these every year, not knowing when they're gonna come in, just set that by yourself.
Thank you, thank you for your efforts last weekend, I appreciate it.
Okay, job, had my pickup set up with a operation center in the backseat as needed, so.
There you go, all right, thanks. Heather, do you have anything?
Nope.
Okay, uh, moving around, Heather? Jean?
Yeah, um, okay, thirteen sixty-three, so he's been in enrollment and review right now for the largest study. So that increases the number of fans to twenty-five or thousand, three twenty-five, three thousand. Instead of two hundred and fifty-five, uh, or, or a hundred thousand, three hundred and fifty-five, so that should increase our revenue some.
Well, they were, they were talking about that's going to replace all the money we're gonna lose if they, if they do, with, here it is taxed, I don't think, it's not even gonna be close.
Um, I thought it, to be, to be clear, it's, it's, uh, I think sixteen pages, and there's a series since I got back, so I have a, I have a chance to look at it.
Okay.
I need to take a look at if they've increased the percentages that we did. That's what we did.
And they were talking, they were talking about that also, I don't know what they got resolved, but they, it was in the discussions.
It's not in open and review, so I'd be saying so, well, the last day of the year, it's Thursday, so.
Thursday. I just pulled up the calendar, it's Thursday.
Okay.
Huh?
Okay, anything else, Jean?
That's it.
All right. Ashley, you have anything?
Um, I will just say that we, we are gonna get the issue resolved, the, the couple that was here.
Thank you, I knew you would. Okay, Steve?
Uh, see, the pilot project got fired up today, whether the street sounds like that's gonna be, it is feeling deeply down there, it's general by which is open, energy is not only yet, on track, it's, 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 as of tomorrow, we start getting that one, I think, so.
Okay. Kelly?
Did they make it out there today at all?
They were out there today, yes, trying to get the rain over the box, right, and it's still isn't, it's Friday, they were out there, they were out all weekend, it's on Friday last week, trying to get that go back, go, go top, get it, it's still pumping, so, we'll be able to tear it up over the weekend, I just want to see it dry out and just go, you know.
Okay, very good, Kelly, anything?
Just early voting started in my office, and this is the election where voter ID is now in effect, so, take your ID to vote.
Okay.
Photo ID. Photo ID.
We already discussed legislation, we have, do have a detention tour, I'm going to excuse myself from the detention tour tonight. Because I can't walk, I'm gonna go home.
I think Ford's can handle that.
Good, you did, you got, you got it handled, all right. Okay, so with that, we will, uh, we will go to the detention center for our tour, and somebody will give you a call when we're finished, Kelly.
Do I need a motion to go to recess, or do you?
No, it's part of the agenda, we're just moving on.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Didn't we just do that last week?
Yeah, it was last week.
Yeah, I, I can swear with you.